No call.
All right, no call please.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
The floor, Mayor.
If we could all please stand for the pledge and stay standing afterward for a moment of silence for Councilmember Freddie Fisickelli.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mayor, first up is Kevin Warnath for the Eagle Scout Project.
Okay.
More money.
Hello, my name is Kevin Warnath, I'm a Eagle Scout from 2060. I'll be planning to provide furnishings to the Frontier Trails Park, which is the park that is being developed by Southwest Ranches. I'll be installing a hexagonal picnic table and a trash receptacle that are both gray and they're out of recycled materials. I will have my fellow Scouts help me in building this and installing it at the park.
This is your Eagle Scout project?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for my project, my, um... My project is gonna cost roughly $2,000, so I'm gonna have to work on my fundraising and, um...
They're trying to get your stuff open, I think, on the screen here.
Yes.
We'll give you just a minute. Do you need some IT support?
No, I need the password to be correct. Capital K, E-V-I-N, 2019.
Let me say, while we're waiting for that, I have a history of contributing to all the Eagle Scouts that come before us in their projects, so I'll be donating a hundred dollars to your fundraising event, so...
I'd also like to donate also to that.
Thank you very much.
I think it's a commendable job that you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, yes, that is the, that is the sign that's currently outside, showing that it's gonna be the area that is gonna be under development. That is an example of what the table's gonna look like when finished.
That's gonna be all out of recycled plastic?
Yes. Well, yes, I believe so. And then, it's gonna be gray, but that is a picture of what the receptacle's gonna look like. Okay. Yes.
Just a question, you're gonna build one octagon table and build one of those trash receptacles?
Trash receptacle, yes.
Is there a motion by the council?
I make a motion to approve?
You have been in the last three, for whatever reason. Second.
You have a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Any public comment or questions on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed, back to us, any other questions we have?
How long do you think that's gonna take you?
Um, to build?
Yeah.
Um, I think it could take a couple hours. If I have enough people, it should go by a little bit quicker, but...
Really?
It's gonna take some time, just to put everything together.
If you're doing it in a couple hours, you better shoot a GoPro video on that one.
Yeah. We're gonna wanna see it.
'Cause that'll be impressive. So, no call please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Anyhow, get with December, I'll give December the money in the next day or so.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Next item on our agenda is Marilyn Stevens, the census presentation, but Marilyn isn't here, so if you wanna roll into public comment?
Yep, gladly do that. Just for purposes of the motion, if we could have a motion and put that at the end of the agenda, if you wanna keep it on. Still moved?
Second.
All right, call a question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Public comment, Mayor, we have two speakers tonight, Steve Brightcruz followed by David Kazinsky.
Steve Brightcruz, 5120, Southwest 195th Terrace. I just wanted to, with the passing of Councilmember Fisickelli, I just wanted to say a couple words. He, Freddie really embodied who we were, who we are as a town. From the first time that I had a serious conversation with him was actually during the 2002 campaign, when I was running for office, and he was campaigning for Forrest Blanton, my opponent. But, but we spent about two hours at one of the pole places talking and had a great conversation, and he became a friend that day, even though we were on two different campaigns, he became a good friend that day, and he remains so, till his passing. And, uh, and, you know, to, about two weeks ago, I was fortunate enough to spend a couple hours with him in his house, and, uh, and you know, the amazing thing was that he was the same guy. He believed in the same things, he stood for the same things, he was as optimistic about our town and who we are and who we would become, the last time I spoke to him as the first time I spoke to him. He stood for everything that, that we're about, our rural lifestyle, the Everglades, the, just the incredible place that we are. So, um, I know we'll all miss him, I'll miss him, and I just offer up my prayers to his family, thank you.
Thanks. Hit repeat.
Good evening, Council, David Kazinsky, 6411, Holliday Trail, speaking on behalf of Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association in part. Yesterday evening, our board approved $200 expenditure for Freddie Fisickelli, whether it be for flowers or any charity to which the family wishes the contribution to go to. One of the comments there, Vince Valetta, called Freddie his friend, made it a very good point, that was his friend. Secondly, on October 19th, the Shot Center, which is right up on Flamingo Road, is holding a 5K run on the roads of Sunshine Ranches. Like to invite everybody to come out, participate, gonna be a lot of fun. And, uh, last, I left some article, copies of some articles up there, if you're an employer and you have various employees that could be subject to overtime, you might wanna pick that up and maybe seek legal advice regarding overtime pay. There's gonna be some changes beginning January 1st. That's it, have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, we're up to board reports.
All right. I don't think there's any, any board reports though, well, Steve's got it, so... That's all right.
Steve Brightcruz, comp board, just a quick update, that we did get thank you to George Morris, I did a great job chairing the meeting, last, our last meeting, I was out of town, so I could not, I was on the phone but could not be there to chair it, so I appreciate George doing that. We did get through the entire list of the land uses, so that was encouraging. We did have some questions and things we needed to follow up on, which I don't think will be any problem wrapping that up in our next meeting, so we appreciate the extra meeting that you all gave us, and, so I think we're on target, thank you.
Great. Any other board reports? Seeing none? Councilmember McCollum?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Dee.
I just wanted to say thank you to Marty and Richard and Russell, Andy did a great job with the budget, appreciate it. Always thanks to the town attorney for keeping us in line and, and in check. I wanna thank my colleagues here for their hard work with the budget, I think we did a pretty good job. And, um, I'd like to speak about one of our colleagues, Freddie Fisickelli, and in his passing. Alfred Anthony Fisickelli, in case you didn't know what his real name was, he was born Alfred. He was raised in Miami and came here to the unincorporated area, which is now known as Southwest Ranches. This was back in 1981, brought his wife Sarah, who was loved by all, and her also passing, brought his three children, raised them, they've raised their families here. Freddie has six grandchildren, and he's a great grandpa to ten, which is a lot. When I'm eighteen in the eighties, not long after Freddie was here, um, I heard of Farmer Freddie, and I kept thinking, who is Farmer Freddie? Had no idea, and then got to meet him. What an incredible man. Had such a good outlook on life, and family meant more to Freddie than just about anything in the whole world. To keep his kids as close as he possibly could, his grandkids even closer, and those great grandbabies when they came by, anytime you stopped by the house, I mean, it was all he could do was to keep his hands off of them, and not hug and squeeze them to death to the point where they'd say, "Grandpa, you're hurting me." He was a true pioneer, he was elected into Broward County Pioneer Hall of Fame. He sat on the MPO where he gave me some really good advice, I've been serving for three years. I have to be perfectly honest, when he convinced me to take this, I thought, this is just gonna be a pain, I don't like it, I have no interest in it, but it was very interesting. I learned a lot from Freddie. I had, um, he couldn't talk to me about too many things once I was on the council, but, um, he just always told me to stand my ground. I had spoke to him about our, um, power to be able to vote all the time there. He said this was something that we really needed to fight for. You then sense have put stuff into place, and, um, if this goes through and we get a voice, this will be, without a doubt, Freddie Fisickelli's voice. He fought hard for it from the very beginning, and he is so warranted. He had morals and respect for everybody. He was a kind and gentle man, but he was not a pushover. I can remember sitting at the old town hall and many other places fighting with him, and when he walked out the door, business was business and friends were friends. To the point, one day, fighting with him, and the famous line was, "Freddie, you're being a cowpimp." And he looked at me, and he was so angry after I said that, and when we walked out, he goes, "Well, sorta kinda, well, sorta kinda." I never had any ill feelings for any of the decisions he made, because he made some of the best for the town. He was there from conception. He was there from our very first park to our last park, which he was extremely proud of, Country Estates, which he called the Fishing Hall Park. I still haven't figured out why it was called the Fishing Hall Park, but that's what he called it. He was very much involved in St. Mark's Church. He was loved there more than you could ever imagine, him and Sarah. He was like, part of the fixtures, part of the ambiance, you know? When you'd go there, you just naturally looked around to see where Freddie or Sarah was. He sat many, many hours and thought of what he wanted for our town, and many times I heard him say, "Our town," it wasn't just the town or my town, it was our town. He believed wholeheartedly in it. He never had any malice towards anyone, and I can't think of anybody that didn't really truly love Freddie, or have great respect for the work and the efforts that he put into this town. I love the fact that he could separate business from pleasure and never held it against anybody, you know? He said, "If I'd have been sitting out there," he said, "I probably would be doing the same thing." Honesty. Don't forget him, talk about him. I'm gonna talk about him up here, because if you stop talking about somebody, they kinda cease and go away. He's the end of an era, as far as I am concerned. I love you, I miss you, I'll keep you in my prayers, and mostly your family, 'cause they are also a blessing to this town. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mike earlier today, I told him to stay involved and not give up, not go away, that he also, him and Mary and his brother were also a big part of this town, their kids, their grandkids, and, um, I really miss you, and we love you, Freddie. That's it, Dee, your friend.
All right. Who'd like to go next?
Uh, I'll go next.
Go ahead, Bill.
Dee covered a lot of the things that I thought I'd go into more detail on, because, I mean, I think we've all had a lot of experiences. I'm glad, Steve, you can pin down exactly when you remember meeting Freddie, but I, I couldn't do that, as I've been trying to organize my thoughts, he's, he's kind of always been there in, in my participation in the town. But, last time when I was talking about, you know, his illness and all that, I said, he was a mentor to me. I wanted to talk a minute about that, because, you know, I call counsel, I've been known to call council members when I disagree or wanna, wanna understand the way they vote. And, probably it was in the, I don't know, in the 2005, 2010 range, council was doing a lot, and I didn't always agree with Freddie, and I'd call him. And what I discovered was that he was making decis, very sound decisions, you know, with a lot of information, always the best interests of the town. He, he, if, if we, if we had to be on the phone for an hour for him to educate me on it, he gave me that time. He gave me a lot of his time over the years, again, picked up the phone, "Freddie, I don't believe you voted that way. What, Bob, do you know about this?" I mean, that's the way he would start out, in a very folksy and sometimes fatherly way, just to try to teach me, you know, his thinking, and, and why, and, and how it would benefit the town. And over, over the years, I have gotten to respect him like few other people, not just my involvement with the town. So, I'll miss his guidance, his mentoring, um, he's a good guy. And, there's something else I wanted to bring up, to entertain, for the council to entertain. We don't have a tradition of naming places after residents or, or people or anything like that, but the ballfields that are out at Country Estates Park are there because of Freddie. He saw an opportunity to build that out, and a lot of people don't know, he was heavily involved in Optimist Baseball when his kids were young, and he is, he's one of the people that got the ballfields built there on Sterling Road at, I don't know, hiatus or so. He was very instrumental, and he kinda tried to plant the seeds here for something like that, so, I don't know what it would take, I don't know how you all feel about maybe naming that either Freddie Fisickelli Ball Field, or Fisickelli Ball Field, something to put out there, so, that name doesn't go away and people will see it.
I'll jump in really just a second here, and a resident came to me a couple of years ago regarding Freddie, and they mentioned about naming 166th Avenue after him, or their street that they live on, uh, after him, so, I think we'll be having some discussions along the way, but, uh, that gentleman actually called me back today, said, "Do you remember this?" I said, "Sure do," and he said, "Now that Freddie's passed, maybe we can talk about it," so, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, a lot more people would see 166th and all the way back on his street, so that's, that's a good idea, yeah. As far as other council items, uh, nothing really. I did notice a local celebrity came in a few minutes ago, um, oh, came and left. Yeah, am I not, Mary McPhee, excuse me, Commissioner Mary McPhee, uh, just came in. Welcome, Mary, well, you're, you're a celebrity. So, thank you for joining us.
Our census lady just arrived.
Yes, the other celebrity.
Yes.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Gary, yep.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thanks everybody for coming. One of the things I get to do up here is I get to comment on people that I admire, and, uh, and I wanna say, you know, a farewell to Freddie. I made a couple of notes, so I wouldn't forget anything, uh, while I was thinking about this, what I was gonna say. And, uh, you know, I'd like to point, I point out to people that he had a, a quiet dignity about him, that I admired, I never seen him flustered, um, he was al, always thoughtful as to what he was, where he was going, what he was gonna say. He was a, a great role model, as a family man, a resident, and a person. Uh, we talked a lot about fishing and different things, and it was quite memorable. And as a founder of the town, he put the town first and helped us build what we, what we are today. He was instrumental in probably everything that transpired in the town. He made improving our drainage and infrastructure one of his highest priorities, I remember him in, in the Montessori school, slamming down the mic to get everybody's attention, saying, "People, if we don't drain this town, we're gonna be rowing," things of that nature. It was very important to him, and, and I'm glad it was, because we drained a lot of areas of the town with his guidance. He definitely loved being a cattleman, uh, I think, and he talked about cows all the time, we were talking about it with my neighbor across the street who has cattle, so we, we had some, uh, great conversations. We were lucky to have him as long as we did, and we're gonna miss him and Sarah terribly. Just a, I was doing some research a while back, and this is just a factoid, I wanted to call it a, I'd call it a Freddie Fun Fact. Probably most people don't know this, but, and I didn't either up to that point, and no, I don't have a lot of time on my hands, but I researched every election we had since the year 2000. Freddie Fisickelli was the single highest vote getter of any item on any election roster, ever. He got more than charter amendments, more than everything, more than, he had the most votes, more people voted for him than any other thing in our town. So, I just thought I'd mention that, it was just kinda interesting fact that I, that I pulled out, so... And then, a few other things I'd like to get into, just some items of note, we've got coming up on the calendar, we've got the pet adoption on the 5th of October, here at Town Hall, from 11 to 2. We have the Arts and Crafts Festival at the Equestrian Park on the 19th, from 10 to 4. Halloween at the Barn, uh, the 26th, that's Saturday night, from 6 to 9 p.m. We're gonna have the Flowmobile on the 24th, we had it here this morning, and we're gonna have it on the 24th of October, 10 to 2. Senator Rubio's office will be here for, if you have any, seek any aid or information on federal matters, on the 10th, from 10 to 11, at the conference room. A little bit out, further out now, November 16th, we have the Car Show at the Barn, put on by the Parks Foundation, and the Chili Cook-Off from 10 to 4. Broward County Property Appraiser's gonna be here on the 21st, October, from 10 to 12, and on January 3rd, we have Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches, which is always a lot of fun, would benefits the, the scholarship fund. And that's all I have on the, uh, calendar of stuff. I was wondering if we wanted to wait until after your comments or something, I wanted to come back and go into possible, some of the legal stuff that we're talking about with District 3. How do you, how would you wanna handle that? Would you want to...
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, I'll make some comments, and we'll jump back to it if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna say ditto on all the comments related to Freddie, I mean, I don't know, I, I can't really add much to it other than my own personal experiences, a couple of them, but I can tell you that whenever you needed help or assistance, and you asked Freddie, he was there for you. He had a lot of good advice, a lot of help, uh, you know, I met and chatted with him on quite a few different occasions on different things, uh, before I was on the council, and chatted with him on different stuff, not town stuff, when I was on the council about different things. We talked about real estate, we talked about cattle, we talked about a lot of different things, but, uh, very well-versed guy, a serious, serious Everglades man. I know some people that were friends with him way back, and he said he was really, he was one of the original Everglades guys. So, he's gonna be greatly missed, we love him dearly, sadly missed, and, uh, you know, he, he won't be able to be replaced, but let's please remember him as best we can and talk about him. So, thank you for that. The, other thing I wanna say, the census lady's here, she's gonna pick up at the tail end of this meeting, but, uh, she's gonna be stupendous for us, so, I saw her up in Orlando at the convention, and it was wonderful. So, go ahead, sir, what else you wanna talk about?
Oh, are you on to legal?
Yeah, I'm switching over to you.
All right, you're on to legal, sorry, Mayor, responding to you.
By the way, happy birthday to your wife today?
Thank you. First off, I, I absolutely ditto the sentiments by the entire council on Freddie Fisickelli. I knew Freddie 35 years, and probably my biggest regret was not accepting his invitation to join him on castration day, and that's a true story, and those of you who know Freddie, he was amazing, from his prior careers of, of pre-cattle, and then moving out to the ranches, and was original pole, pole guy, and, uh, just every, I actually, I'm gonna miss very much, Andy, the Thanksgiving and, and Christmas celebrations that we have here, because sitting at a table with him for those uninterrupted hours and hearing his stories were even better than anything else, and he lived an incredible life, his wife lived an incredible life, and, uh, they'll always be a part of this town and the history of the town, and I'm sure we'll recognize as such in the near future. Leading to what Councilmember Jablonski said, I had a very long talk earlier this morning with the Attorney General's Office about our opinion, because they got it and it raised a lot of different issues for them. First, they said that my opinion asked them whether or not the supervisor of election was properly doing their job, basically. And they said, for them to answer that, they would want a back-and-forth dialogue between us and the property, and the supervisor, briefs from both sides, and they believed that they could get us an opinion within six months after analyzing, true story, after analyzing, uh, both sides and, and coming to a conclusion. Uh, and they actually called the supervisor the de facto supervisor, because it's an unelected supervisor as well. We then got into our town charter a little bit, and they said, "Listen, you know, while we're not, can't give you an opinion right now," they said, "The law is clear," you know, that a judge is going to have to find that as long as there's no ill will or done for improper purposes, that if your council appoints someone, um, they're gonna uphold that appointment." And I said, "I believe so as well," and we both cited the different case law that supported the fact that a council making a decision on the, on, for the clear purposes of the best interests of the public, without any malice involved in it, are going to be upheld. And they, while they can't recognize that in a formal opinion, they agreed. They also agreed that, um, that the town council is best to appoint on, or about November 4th or after, because that solidifies, in their mind and in my mind, the fact that it was done at a proper time and, and within that year period. And they also recognized the impossibility... And they also recognized the impossibility of the supervisor to not do it within that period is in itself a full justification to a court of law if it ever came to that to do the appointment. So, as a result of speaking at length with them this morning, I have told them that I would come to you tonight and do two things, and that is to recommend that you all seek to fulfill the appointment on or after November 4th, 2019. And if you elected to do so, that I would agree to call them back and to send them an email to withdraw our request for a legal opinion because, basically, they're saying it's going to create a major issue. And that they understand what's going on, and they, you know, although they can't write an opinion, they support our actions and what we're doing. That being said, if you do go along with that, Andy has given you a non-invention of the wheel, which is the same one that other cities have used, which are a application that you can go on, read now, and we can discuss at the next meeting, basically for any interested applicant to be able to apply. It would be advertised in both the Town of Southwest Ranches newsletter, and I'm recommending advertised it in the newspaper of general circulation, that these applications are due back in. I recommend having them back in by November 4th, and then shortly meeting thereafter about the candidates, whether or not you want to shortlist an interview, which is a normal procedure, or how you would like to go through the appointment from then. So, generally, based on the numbers that come in, it would come back to the council, basically serving as a selection committee. At a public meeting, we would have a quick meeting and say, "Hey, you got 10 candidates. You probably want to shortlist it down to about half." And then you can do interviews in the public and then have, you know, a chance for the public to ask questions, meet and greet, and then make your appointment from there. Hopefully, everything then would be done by the end of November, and your new council member would be sitting here in the start of December. So, I told the AG's office I would present that to you tonight. If there's consensus, we will proceed in that direction.
I'm 100% on board with it.
Yeah, do you need a motion to reflect that?
I think we should. Right, Russell?
Yeah, I agree.
I'll make the motion, as Keith stated, for the path to District 3 appointment.
Yeah, whatever those two guys said, I second it.
Thank you. And that will also include contacting the AG tomorrow to withdraw our opinion letter.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we want to allow any public comment on this matter?
Your call.
Go ahead. Anybody? No public comment? Public comment is closed. Back desk, call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Other than that, Mayor, no further legal comments.
Okay.
Just, can I just throw, just a question, a request of the administration. Maybe they can lay out a timeline for us, you know, so we understand what the process is and, you know, we can make sure we're prepared. Absolutely. I'll work with Andy on that tomorrow, or we'll get at you Monday, it's a holiday. I'm asking for, by tomorrow, I mean. Next week, we'll have a timeline for you. Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right. Andy, you up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just first, I just want to thank Marty and Rich and the rest of the staff for their efforts in the budget process this year. As you all know, it's a six-month process for us, and it culminated tonight with your support for our efforts, and I want to thank you all as well. Other than that, I do also want to take a moment and talk about Freddie. Freddie served on this council for 15 of the town's 19 years. He was originally elected back in 2000, served to 2004, went back on in 2008, and served until just recently, and he's a five-time vice mayor. Record may never be broken. So, I've really gotten to know Freddie and Freddie's family over the last few months, and certainly, my heart breaks for their loss of Sarah earlier this year and Freddie now. I will say, and with all due respect to the council members who were serving when I started, nobody was harder on me than Freddie. Whatever I said, he challenged. We discussed it. I had to back it up, and it was, it was a good, I mean, it wasn't contentious in any way, but he wanted to know what and why, he wanted the details, and so we had, we had a lot of conversations about it, and I will always appreciate that because he helped make me a better administrator. Over the years, we got to know each other very well, and we developed what I thought was a wonderful, wonderful relationship. He told me some great stories that not only taught me about this town, but taught me about life, and I'll always appreciate that as well. So, just on behalf of the town staff, I just want to say, "We love you, Freddie, and we'll miss you." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Number 10, you want to read that? All right now.
Nope, we're just up to.
Yes, Mayor, we have a census presentation, but before that, we'd like to read a proclamation into the record.
Okay.
This is a proclamation of the Town of Southwest Ranches. Whereas every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau counts residents across the country, and April 1st, 2020, is the official deadline for residents to submit their Census 2020 form. Whereas the Town of Southwest Ranches is officially kicking off a local census campaign with the creation of a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee for the Town of Southwest Ranches. Whereas a complete count committee raises awareness of the importance of Census 2020, assertively reaches out to hard-to-enumerate groups, and encourages participation in the census for all citizens of the Town of Southwest Ranches. Whereas a complete count ensures accurate census data that is critical for government programs, policies, and decision-making, including federal and state representation and funding of programs such as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, Section 8 housing choice vouchers, children's health insurance, Medicaid, and public education. And whereas undercounted communities do not receive their fair share of federal funds, a recent study from George Washington University shows that $1,445 in federal funds is distributed annually for each resident counted in Florida. And whereas the complete count committee is a trusted voice in the community in partnership with a Broward County agency staff liaison, town staff, and dedicated members of the community. Now, therefore, the Mayor and Town Council proclaim September 26, 2019, as Southwest Ranches Census 2020 Complete Count Committee Kickoff Day, dated this 26th day of September 2019.
Awesome. Thank you. Can we get on the front and present this and get a picture with her, and then we're going to pass it over to you, dear.
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good.
Awesome. Thank you. Stage is going to be yours.
Yeah. We've been talking about you.
Yeah. We're going to let you face the audience, so.
Okay. I brought. So, don't mind your back to us. We're good. Okay?
I was thinking it's census bling.
Yeah, but before she begins, let me tell you something about her. She's going to capture your attention like nobody's business. Did I put the U-Don?
Yes.
Okay.
No, these are back, ladies.
Yeah. We're going to pass it on. We're going to pass it on. I guess you guys say, "My God, where's she been? 10 years, she still looks the same." There are people who believe that we go away for 10 years and we still get paid. And that's been my suggestion, but they keep rejecting it. And I don't understand that. So, here we go again, and I love, oh, my God, I love that display over there. I've got to get like 12 pictures of that. You know, it's so funny because so many people forget about the census because you don't hear about us for 10 years, then all of a sudden, here we are. For the last seven weeks, we've had about 16,000 people in the field verifying addresses. And every sheriff department in our seven states have been trying to arrest those 16,000 people and wondering, "What are they doing out here? We're not taking the census now." But there's so much to be done in the background of a census. You know, every census is the same because the job is to count everybody, but every census is different. So, this census is really different. It's different because most people are accustomed to getting a questionnaire in the mail, filling it out, and I must say, big props to Southwest Ranches. You had a 78% participation rate in 2010, four points above the national average and four points above the state average. I mean, your first census, so we only had to knock on just a few doors, and those people were so cooperative, we almost adopted them. But this census, between March 12th and 20th, you're going to get a letter that says, "Dear American household, we love you. We're back. It's census time again. Go online and complete the census." And everybody's like, "What?" Go online and complete the census, or call this toll-free number and complete it by phone. Then we're going to send you a reminder letter. Dear American household, we still love you, but you haven't completed your census. So, get yourself in gear and go online and complete the census. Then, if you haven't done it by April the 8th, we're going to send you a reminder card. That's the third communication. Now, our patience is wearing thin. So, we decided, "Oh, what the heck." The fourth communication, we're going to send you a paper questionnaire. Then you're going to feel bad because you could have gone online on March 12th, finished it in 10 minutes, and moved on with your life. And then we would have been sending all this stuff to you. Now, most people think that we, older people, are not going to go online. They don't know us. We stay online. You know, this, all this new-fangled stuff is new to us, so, you know, we have iPads and iPhones. We don't know how to work them, but that's not the point. And, you know, we grew up with things being invented. We're not like these young people. They're not looking for inventions, they're looking for enhancements. You know, we're still, you know, I remember, you know, when we had, there was a wood stove by great-grandmother's house. You know, he said, "Wood? What'd you put in it?" Well, we got to work on them. So, this is what I want you to do. We've got to, you've got to help me now. Now, by the power not invested in me, I'm making all of you census ambassadors because you've got to convince your neighbors to go online, and you've got to help somebody to go online. It only takes about 10 minutes. There are only 10 questions. And this time, when you select your race, you know, for the census, you'll be able to put your country of origin. So, if you're Irish, or Italian, or Polish, you'll be able to write that underneath your race. That's the first time in history. So, that's pretty good. If you're black, and if you're from Jamaica, or Nigeria, or Honduras, or Haiti, you'll be able to write that underneath. That's all brand-new. We've never done that before. And then, in household relationship, you're not going to realize there were that many relationships in a household when you see all of the, all the choices. So, this census, our theme is "Shape Your Future, Start Here." So, one nice millennial said to me, he said, "Miss Marilyn, you're 70 years old. What kind of future you trying to shape?" I said, "Well, I got a certificate that says I can live to be 110." So, you know, I've got quite a few more years here, so this is really important to me. Smart self. So, I need you guys, I need your help. I need your help. Now, today, I spoke to some commanders from SouthCom, and I love, I love that. They actually went on their phones and put an appointment in their phones for March 12th. I said, "Wow, I haven't even done that." And they put it there so they have an alert that they're going to do their census by phone or internet. I said, "Wow, I never thought of that." So, that's, "All of you, go get your phones right now." You know, you have to scroll a lot for those dates. Keep on scrolling, and then you get to March 12th. Now, I want to say this for the women in here. If you're pregnant, the baby has to be born before April 2nd because if the baby's born on April 2nd, the baby won't be in the census. As of April 1st, now, many of you that have achieved everything in life that you want to achieve, hold off until April 2nd because the Southwest Ranches needs that count. That's why you need to go ahead and get your census done and stop playing around. Is everybody with me on that? So, is everybody with me? You could go online, you could do it by phone, but if you're a traditionalist, it's okay. It's nobody's business. You can wait for the fourth communication, and that paper questionnaire will come in the mail. The rest of us will be at Bahamas Breeze celebrating the census while you at home waiting for the paper questionnaire. And then you got to go to the post office and mail it. But if you go online to do it, that's, that's great. For those of you that volunteer in schools, we need your help. See, young people don't have any problems with the census being online at all because they're thinking, "Where else would it be?" They just don't know what it is. So, they talk about millennials, the 18 to 34 group, right? It's big, 73 million nationwide. But 10 years ago, they were 8 and 24. So, somebody else probably did the census for them, so they have no idea what it is. So, telling them to go online to do it means nothing. So, now, if you have, we need you to adopt a millennial and help them to understand how important this is. Every 10 years, we get a reset because the census is about two things, power and money. Power and money. For instance, if the state of Florida lost a congressional district, it would lose state senate districts, state house districts, it would lose some voting districts. It would all go all the way, all the way down to, you may lose a seat on your city council. That's just how it works, power and money. Because they're going to allocate that $675 billion. And the money, everybody said, "Oh, that's a big deal. Money follows the need." No, no, no. The money follows the numbers. So, Southwest Ranches, I'm counting on you. I got my eyes on you. I don't live that far away. I'll just show up anywhere. You know, I'm going to take your picture. I can take it right now. So, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am an unofficial census ambassador.
An unofficial censor ambassador.
Amen.
Amen.
That was a good one, Marilyn. I want one.
You got them.
I'll get one. Thank you, ma'am.
You got enough?
Yes.
Okay, and you all can have the other bags. I also brought, yes. Always the hard questions, you know, from the audience. Once you get that audience participation, you're in trouble. You know, see, it's so unofficial that I have it in my mind. You know, in the old days, you know, we imagined things, you know. In new days, they just Google it. But see, just look at it in your mind, that 110 will be there. I also brought you some sports bottles. We have them in 12 languages. These are the ones in Spanish they sent to me, so every time I get a new language, I bring.
I want Chinese.
Yes, yes.
Ah, so.
Yes.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
See, I'm making use of my official distributor. Also, we have something else, because I have no idea. I know a millennial put this together in Washington. On your, on your, on your computers, you know how you have the webcam, and nobody wants to look back at them? So, this has a census message on it, but it's. Oh, this is my, this is my picture. [inaudible]
You need to tell that car wash story.
Oh, yes.
[laughing] You didn't think I forgot that, did you?
I have a better one than that.
Okay, if you got a better one than that, go ahead, but that car wash story was pretty good.
I have a better one than that. In 2010, someone called the office and he said that he was not gonna participate in the census. And he called late at night and I'm the kind of person, if I'm in the office, there's no such thing as my tour of duty is ended. I answer the phone. And I said, "Sir, if you don't participate, we're gonna come and knock on your door." And he says, "I'm not gonna answer." I said, "Well, we're gonna knock," and I told him how many times, I said, "then we're gonna go to your neighbor and ask your neighbor about you because in a census, we can do that because it includes everybody." He said, "My neighbors don't know me." I said, "Let me tell you about my mother. When you invite her to your birthday party, she comes home and puts in her journal that you were age 45 and because she's an educator, then she says, 'So, your birthday,' and she writes that down in her book. Now she's got your birthday. And because she gives good monetary gifts, your wife invites her and grandma does too and the children, they invite her over." So, when you need something done, you know Dr. Stevens is trustworthy, you want her to fax stuff for you, right? So, you tell her to fax all your tax information and everything where it's supposed to go. Then because you're careless, you ask Dr. Stevens to make a, keep a copy so in case your house burns down, somebody will have your information. So, she's got it in her file. So, and because she's retired, she sits there, she knows everybody that goes in and out of your house. She knows more about your house than you know because she's all day. So, you invite the mother-in-law to stay with you, you're not that happy about her being there, so everybody goes to work and leave by itself. My mother goes and knocking, invites her over and the mother-in-law tells all the rest of the business. So, mother writes that down. So, when the census person comes around and they say, "I want to know about your neighbor," mother said, "Wait a minute, let me get my book." And she, and she's more accurate than anybody. So, I propose for, "Stop hiring all these people, just hire a Miss Ann on every block who knows everybody's business." And then we can save ourselves some money because she'll work for free. And that's my best census story.
There you go, dear. Greatly appreciated. We thank you immensely, dear, and may we all bang it for census for 2020 because, as you said, the, the better turnout we have and the better, the more money will come to the areas that it's needed. So, we hope everyone gets everybody's neighbors and gets everybody to participate, so...
We're hoping that you will get back with us and tell us what the percentage rate is again and hopefully it's even higher.
Yes, yes.
So, can I trouble our colleague, neighbor, council member McVeigh to come up and say a few words?
Yay!
[laughing] You can turn that pony around or face that way, whatever makes you happy.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to speak on.
Nothing special, dear, just to, we wanted to say hello to you and you're here and came to see us, so we want to acknowledge you.
I actually came because I wanted to hear about Freddie and find out if there were any arrangements made and show my respect and...
I'll let you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And you know, I always enjoy being over on the side of town, so anything interesting goes on or if you need me for anything, you know right where to find me.
We do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right. You're good?
Yeah.
Anyone want to do an enjoyment?
Motion to adjourn?
Tagging.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, greatly appreciate it.